Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, July 16th, 2024. The time is now 7:00 P. M. And could we begin with a bunch of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any public comments? You have anybody up there? Any correspondence? I move that we approve the minutes from the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting from July 2nd, 2020. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. No opposition? Motion carries. We're going to forego the first lecture report for tonight. This is about the short time we have before the next meeting, in case we get a long discussion. All business. As far as a consideration of appointments to fill vacancies, I did speak through the Republican Chair of the Vacancy Committee. They are moving forward with a couple of folks on here, but we don't have them ready tonight. We're expecting a vote sometime next week. Or is it we got them?
Yeah, Fourth Wednesday.
Fourth Wednesday, okay. So we may have someone here from the Ethics and the Board of Education. In a fourth Wednesday. Not ready to connect the names.
That we interviewed.
Okay, so we'll actually table this for a moment. I move that we table a consideration of appointments. For a second. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right. On our new business, I move that we add at the end of new business, consideration of approval of $49,670 from C N R for replacement of supervisory controllers, JASIS, at Bethel Middle School, Berry School, and Bethel High School. Have a second. In all favor? Say aye. Aye. So we'll consider that added to the agenda. Right over here, so don't forget. First off, under new business, I move that we recommend to the town meeting that we waive the property tax due in excess of $5 in accordance with Connecticut General Statute 12-144C. So what this is, we have a a number of folks each year who end up with very, very small amounts of taxes. You look at C1. That's kind of giving you an example. You know, we have $2.45, $4.233. I think in some places I've seen as low as like, here's a $1.46. At some point, it becomes very difficult to collect those taxes. The costs evolve. Really exceeds the benefit we get. And it's not worth pursuing leads or anything. So under the statute, we're allowed to waive under $100. And with the advice of the tax collector, we've chosen $5. Any discussion? I think no one read that we moved. Okay.
So are you gonna, if people are behind in that, are we by doing this?
Yeah, if anything under $5, it's my fault.
What I'm saying is, if we have people who didn't pay, that are currently in arrears, that are over the $5, are they gonna be grandfathered in, or do they owe the money?
My understanding, I don't think we have, my understanding is we're not going after the money if they're under $5. If they're over $5, we continue to try to.
If they're laying in a compound, let's go.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, if it's going over that number. Yeah, okay. So without further mind, all in favor? Say aye. Aye. And no opposition? Motion carries. I move that we recommend to the town meeting acceptance of the Economic Development as a distinct department within the town. Have a second.
There's a discussion.
So what this is, for some period of time, under the budget, the Economic Development Director had been under the first election. This year, in our budget process, we agreed to move that out to a separate entity and make it a separate department. The way to create a separate department is at the town meeting. So we have, we recommended the town meeting, the town meeting approves or denies whether it's going to be a department. We'll actually have a couple others. I'm going to add to the genitite that are just strictly clean up. And you'll understand as we go along why. The reason we're doing this now, too, is we're trying to get a few things ahead of us that we can have at a town meeting down the line. So we're not going to set the date for the town meeting now, but we're going to keep track of these things. And then we can go along one at that. Does that make sense? So with that, I will try mine. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. And the motion carries. I move to add to the agenda right after this, consideration of recommending to the town meeting acceptance of Department of Public Utilities as a distinct department within the town. All in favor of adding to the agenda? Aye. And motion carries. And one more. Consideration, I move that we recommend to the town meeting acceptance. I move to add to the agenda, consideration of recommendation to the town meeting acceptance of information technology as a distinct department within the town. All in favor? Aye. So those are actually the agenda. So first up, I move that we recommend to the town meeting acceptance of the Department of Public Utilities as a distinct department within the town. And so Department of Public Utilities has been basically separated for some period of time. We're coming up on our charter revision. We figured out, looking at this, the town meeting is the one that actually has to create the department. And that way, we're prepared when the Charter Commission Revision Revision Commission starts, that they can include this in our charter. Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll try your minds. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. And motion carries. I move that we recommend to the town meeting acceptance of information technology as a distinct department within the town. So here, it's been interesting that infant, well, first off, it used to be data collection. That was what the department was called. For many, many years, since at least the 80s, it was under the comptroller to some degree. It was never existing as its own department. It was just something that was actually in the charter and that they, for their daily work tasks, reported to the comptroller. So with the change and it's grown, it's actually its own department. We've been running as information technology. Well, we've been running as data still. Eventually, the need is to change it to information technology within the next charter. So that's why we're going through the housekeeping here, going ahead, creating a new department. Does that make sense? Okay. Need for a little discussion. With that, I'll try mine. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. And motion carries. Keep it up over there, Mary?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. We're moving right along. For discussion, consideration of the approval to renew the lease with the YMCA. Okay, so we actually have Jim O'Rourke, who is Chairman of the Waterbury Region, right? Wednesday. CEO of the Waterbury Region, which right now has operational control of Western Connecticut. Our lease with the Western Connecticut Y for 157 Grassy Plain, the YMCA building, is up December, December 14th. Come in recently asking about, like, before Ray started negotiating and talking about that lease. Definitely an opportunity to start talking about it now. You know, there's a lot of changes going on in the organization. And it gives them a kind of a little bit of a planning. They can plan now that they're going to be there, not have to look for another place. With that, we've had a conversation. I'll turn it over to you if you'd like to say something about the wall of the Y and.
The YMCA is here in Bethel since 1983 over at this facility. We serve approximately 92 kids there. Encouraging them to be preschool kids, about 100, and our after-school program, 16, 17 kids. I'm pleased to say, based on the state, over the last year, we've upgraded the HX systems in the facility, which is on our dollar. We look forward to continue on serving as part of the community in the greater station. It is certified by the Office of Early Childhood, as I have credited. Appreciate the relationship with that one. We'll keep going with it around the five years.
Excellent. You know, I will say this. There's no question that you're needed in the town. We've had a lot of feedback from residents, the need for daycare, the need for after-school care. The fact that you're really a significant entity in town, that with the number of kids that is certified by Office of Early Education, that's a big deal to have me. So you've also been great stewards of the building. I think we've had a great relationship there, so I'm certainly in favor of it. Now, when we had the conversation currently in the lease, the lease is up, they have a seven-year lease which expires in December. What we've discussed is possibly doing a five-year lease and keeping at the current amount. Now, the current amount is $2,784 a month. And the last lease started low when it graduated. I'm proposing to just kind of keep it flat ranging for a while. Given the fact that we're doing okay with the building and you guys invested a lot. Any thoughts?
Without a doubt, you guys provided invaluable space to the town. I know lots of my son went there forever. He goes summer camp, everything. And I think you're actually the best deal in town, and I think it's a benefit to our residents. I have every face.
So as far as doing a vote, because the lease actually comes, even though it's five years, it comes to an amount over $100,000, what we're going to do is we're going to recommend it to the town meeting to approve the lease. And I'll I'll put these two covenants in our motion to be approved. So I move that we recommend to the town meeting the acceptance of a lease with the YMCA for five years, staying at the current rent of $2,784 a month. Second. Okay, all in favor? Say aye. Motion carries. So this will be when we get a town meeting in the next few months. We'll put this on the agenda and then town meeting. Thank you, Jim.
You don't have to sit. You're more than welcome.
I looked down, I'm like, there's only two items, but I was gonna say, you can get lost if you want.
I wouldn't want to say me either.
I move that we assign the locker room project at the municipal center to the public site, the building. So, okay, so when 2020, they started. ARPA money was assigned to work on this project. And they had started, like, kind of working on this. But it was never officially assigned to them. As far as projects go, I think, I think, based on our last conversation with meeting, we're probably in a good headspace to work with them on this project and get it done. So I'm in favor of assigning to them, but it is up to the Board of Selectmen to make that assignment. In lieu of doing this, then we would have to assign it over to our, probably Public Works Department and, you know, work with it on the inside. So, what are your thoughts?
Well, I remember we discussed it. But I thought they needed additional money for plans. Nancy's here, and she should get answered the question.
Here? Yeah, I don't know if they've actually gotten that number yet, but Nancy, was there a meeting today or tomorrow regarding this?
Yeah, so there was a meeting, and we did have a meeting, and you were at the meeting, Dan, with Peter Eckert, the architect, to update the plans. And then we asked him for a proposal to get some kind of an idea, what are we looking at, the cost? And he gave us a proposal that would have included getting us basically to a through a schematic phase where we would then have to go and find out what do we need to do further for plans? And updating the plans, because we have some plans already. And when we did the the lobby there of the GP room, adding bathrooms in there, we realized that we could downsize the number of toilets, et cetera, in the locker rooms. And Dan and both Rachel from Park and Rec, Rachel McGrath, and Dan were in favor of we all feel the same way, like, what does the town need? We don't need huge locker rooms. They're not used like they used to be. So if we could have something smaller to be used if needed or during an emergency, a couple of showers, a couple of toilets, a couple sinks, and then use the space for other things. One of the things that Rachel suggested was to have, she called it a fitness room. Is there enough space to create? We were sitting in the men's, or men's or boys' locker room. And there's, there's this huge space that's not going to be needed as a locker room. So we don't have a total cost yet of what the plans are going to be. We need to get to a place of like, what are we looking at? As far as a footprint, are we moving a lot of things? Are we not moving a lot of things? Because there was a meeting today at the architect's office. I am away. So Roy Steiner and John Mentee had suggested having the meeting so that we could get to a better place of understanding, what's this going to cost for plans? The Board of Selectmen did approve $20,000 to get the plans started. But we don't want to just kind of leave it floating out there with, oh, we're starting the plans, and now what? We did, tried to apply for a steep grant last year using the existing plans. And as Dan knows, and we found out that all of the towns that did receive the steep grants already had money set aside to match the grant or to add to the grant. So if we have a better idea plan-wise and get to the point of having construction documents, I think that would get, put us in a better place to be able to get some actual real-time costs updated from years ago and then be able to apply again for a grant. Long answer to a question.
Yeah. So the bottom line is, we have to wait. We have $20,000. Originally, the architect said they'd look for a retator of $10,000. But I think there's some doubt as to whether we're going to get a full set of plans back from that. In a moment? And whether we get a full set of plans back and whether we would actually get something with all the costs? Because we're going to want to know how much money to set aside before we ever apply for a steep grant. Nick, you got a question?
I understood the building committee to take a set of drawings, take a direction, and go that direction. But I just heard there is no direction. Is it going to be less toilets? Is it going to be another workout space? They don't have a direction, so.
So here's the direction, so you understand kind of what's happened. This project has been, it's kind of sitting there for some period of time and never finished. What the town did a while back, of course, is, you know, they put the money forth out of ARPA to do the front part as a phase in the project, leaving the locker rooms, all that completely undone, which by way is also a big part of our emergency. So.
Just for instance, there was drawings done.
Yes.
The Holly Company did the drawings. Matt Dickerbocker said, it's not a prevailing rate job, so put it out for bid of a regular trade job. And then they realized that, oh shit, this is supposed to be a prevailing rate job. And that's what's something. So we have drawings.
That's incorrect. The plans were done by Peter Eckert, Architects Guild, along with Structural from Archer Engineering and MEP from an individual fellow, I don't, Dimitru Petrescu. So all of those plans were done for that project. It went out to bid. We did get a cost from Holly, which the the plans for the RFP wasn't specific in that it had to be prevailing wage. So we weren't able to, that one bid that we got, that was probably four years ago, we weren't able to use since it didn't contain prevailing wage. So the plans that we have were just for the locker rooms and some adjacent storage areas. And then when we came up with the plan, which was agreed to by the Board of Selectmen to do the GP room lobby first as a phase, we did that. That was less expensive. We were able to use ARPA funds for that.
Nancy, can I make a suggestion? I have no problem turning this over to the Building and Site Committee. But before you engage the architect in any discussions, decide what you're doing. If you're going to do a workout room, great. If you're going to reduce the amount of toilets, great. But there's no reason to speak to an architect until we know exactly what we're looking to do. I mean, that's that's.
It's so you'll understand. We actually had that meeting. Rachel, myself, and we looked at it. And for the town's needs, we did want programming space, which would include a fitness room, a large room in the back that was divided in three pieces, you have smaller rooms, smaller footprint of locker rooms, because they're really not necessary. Probably just like maybe one shower in each. Like, you don't have to have a full. So we've kind of already agreed on where we're going with this. The question is, how do we, how do we build that out? About basically where the water wall, where the wall is with water, all that. That's what they're going back to look at over that direction, right? So engaging the Belt Public Site Building Committee is kind of important because they have marching orders, so what we're looking for. But now they got to go back and say, oh, what are we going to get from redoing the plans? And will we actually get costs at this point? Because we want new costs. So we know what we're going to spend and what we're going to need from steep rent. So we do, they do have the marching orders. They do have a direction to go.
She didn't sound like she had marching orders. She wasn't sure about the space, and there's a big space. But you had the meeting, and she didn't get the message.
Let's, let's not.
I got the message. I was at the meeting. I was at the meeting with Dan and Rachel and the architect.
So there is, there is a direction.
There is a direction.
The issue now is, is number one, they need, they need the authority to do what they're going to do. Because they weren't officially given that, that I could never find anything. And number two is, they have a marching order, their direction to go. They have to work with the architect and take the plans we have from the architect, overlay it, do whatever to change it, and then give something that's like real building plans, engineering, all that. Because before, what we have can't work because it was never priced out properly.
What was the cost of the old project that is for? Do we know what that was?
So the cost that, the bid that we received from Holly for just the locker rooms, not the GP room lobby, but the locker rooms, obviously being larger, some structural stuff that had to be done, storage areas, et cetera, was $900,000 something, $9,800 something. I didn't bring that with me.
Okay.
It was, it was just, it was just under a million. And again, because it wasn't prevailing wage, it would have gone over a million.
Jonathan?
Hey, good afternoon. And you talked about that it's part of the emergency sheltering for Western Connecticut. There's only five shelters from Massachusetts line all the way down to Redding, and Bethel is one of them. So in that meeting, was that part of the equation where you decided you'd need one shower for each?
Well, I think it came up, there might have been two showers in each, but
Several, yeah, a couple of showers.
What's that?
A couple of showers. We were also getting some input from Tom Galliford, Emergency Management.
Yeah, about how many showers we needed. It wasn't, we weren't going to do a full-on locker room the size of it was. It was, and before, I think, a lot of it was digging up the floors. Like, there was a lot of other costs associated with this. So we were expecting to get probably $500,000 steep grant. I'm hearing now that they actually have steep grants for more money, but there'll be a matching part. In my mind, we've been operating on $500,000. So probably maybe a $600,000 project. But we don't really know the number of what we're looking for yet. We might have to go for a larger grant.
I just wanted to make sure that you guys are clear that it's an asset to have a regional shelter with other agencies, state agencies that would support the shelter. I see a lot of different towns wishing they had a shelter because they don't want to go from Redding to Bethel because it's not their town.
What started, and it's, actually, this is important, what started this was actually the need for the shelter, not the need for programming space.
It's to make sure that it's the right fit.
Because right now, it's not, it's not really usable as a shelter that easily because it's full of junk. It's not up to par, like, really to use as a shelter. It needs to be fixed. Originally, I'd hoped we'd get some sort of, you know, DMUS funding or something for it. But it doesn't seem to exist right now in that level. Like, we're getting some funding right now to redo our Emergency Operations Center. Like, $25,000 or $50,000. So we've got to have some things coming. But that thing, there's no money that I've seen for yet. But it is.
As long as it's big.
Yeah, yes, yes, sir. Thank you for that.
So, and I'm not sure who was asking that question, but is there someone, would it be CERT or another organization that would let us know how large the area might need to be for it to be a shelter?
It is Tom Galliford, who actually runs CERT. And he's our Emergency Management Director.
Right, right.
And certainly through the process, we could probably follow up with him. In fact, one of the things we may consider doing is appointing him to the commission for this. Remember, we have the opportunity to appoint two ex-official members to the commission for each project. So maybe that's somebody will take our advisement and put Tom on there to be able to interact with you.
Yes. Because this was, actually, the locker room project was assigned to the Public Site and Building Commission quite a while ago after the last two large storms we had back 2011, 2012. And we needed that shelter space for quite a long time, and the locker rooms and showers, et cetera, were used quite a bit. And as I said, we did have the plans completed, got that quote, not prevailing wage, we couldn't use it. And then started to break it into more, we did come to the Board of Selectmen to ask, could we break it into phases, which would make it a little easier for funding? Finished the GP room lobby. Now we can look at not just the locker rooms, but how can we use that whole space? It's basically what starts at the end of the GP room, all the way down to the gym. What are all those storage areas? They're, I know they're full of stuff right now. Can they be cleaned out? Can they be used differently? And getting input, as Rachel said, it wasn't specifically up to Park and Rec to decide how to use the space. It's up to the town. Where are the town's needs for space?
You just mentioned something, because we've, we've done the research, Mary and I. We're in the understanding that it was never officially assigned to the Public Site and Building. What you're saying to me is the locker room portion was assigned, and it's just dormant? You've not done anything with it?
No, we, we did, we did have completed plans to do that whole, that whole area, including storage areas, et cetera. When it came in at a cost that didn't include prevailing wage, we couldn't go any further until we put it out to bid again. And then we started getting input from a number of different people. Including Park and Rec, say, how can we look at this differently? Can we break it into phases, et cetera?
So with that, technically, we don't have to reassign it?
I don't think so, but I would need to go back and, I mean, I know we did a couple of things. In that area, we did some.
We're on good standing. It's not, doesn't hurt.
Yeah. Yeah. Wouldn't hurt at all, because we did do some, we used some, we used some of the funding that was originally assigned to do some testing and abatement in the area.
Okay, so. So any further discussion on that, it's okay. Okay. With that, I'll try mine. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any? There's nobody here to say, motion carries. I move that we approve tax refunds in the amount of $4,764.47 due to overpaying with taxes. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, last up. So I'll make the motion, I'll just turn it for consideration, but I move that we approve $49,670 from C N R. Excuse me. I move that we recommend to the Board of Finance approval of $49,670 from C N R for replacement of supervisory controllers, JASIS, at Middle School, Berry School, and Bethel High School. Have a second. Okay, so there was some confusion about this. When we, you know, originally started talking about this, we thought this was due, this was all due to the Bethel Middle School and some of the water problems and things that were happening there. Subsequently, we found out from the schools that this is actually part of all three schools. So this is going to be for Bethel High School, $21,680. Bethel Middle School, $21,680. And Berry Elementary for $6,310, which is a smaller program. Now, the other thing that's kind of been, come up to be a little confusing is in April, April 16th of this year, the Board of Selectmen approved ARPA funds for HVAC controllers, Information. In fact, it was April 16th, we did an overview. Jen gave us an overview for HVAC automation software maintenance agreements. So this is, this is entirely different. This was a maintenance agreement and a subscription for the HVAC, excuse me, the software, HVAC software maintenance. What this is, is this is something that's outside of that agreement. That's part of the JASIS. The JASIS are mini, like, little computers. And what we're doing with these is we're going in and installing new graphics. Think of the graphics like a whole schematic of the system to allow the user now to go in and operate the system remotely using that graphics. Right now, these JASIS or the software in them have problems, glitches, whatever it is, that they've been problematic now for some period of time, and they don't operate systems correctly. When we talk about dampers and things like that. This has been on the capital plan for $75,000 for the schools for some period of time. It's totally separate from what we did from ARPA. They're totally separate now. That's the way I understand it. Jen, you're here. If you want to give any color to this. We literally have a minute or so.
I'll try to be quickly.
Yeah, I have a little bit of knowledge. These systems, I just, oh, you tell me what you're going to tell.
Yeah, I just gave it the opportunity.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, uh, the the problems we are experiencing to control our HVAC systems are most pronounced in that school, but we also have some issues at the high school and Berry School and, um, up. This is like updating the programming that's behind the JACES so that, um, any of the glitches we're experiencing, um, will be taken care of.
Who? Who is, who's your automated building controls? Is it Allerton? Who, who, what company?
Now, it's E S C. So.
It's E S C.
We originally had us a different company, and we moved away from that.
So currently, you're telling me that the system you have doesn't have a schematic on it for when they operate or when they go on the computer where, you know, it shows you, it'll show you the chillers, it'll show you all, all the different units. So you do have the schematics on it. So so you do have the ability to control from within the building, correct?
And you're struggling to control because it's not working properly in certain places. So one example is the children, we have the second backup chiller at the middle school. The building management system cannot turn that on. It has to physically turn it on.
So you manually turn it on.
Right, we manually because of situations where this is just a temporary.
So how old you switch systems? How old is the current system that's not working properly?
I don't know exactly.
Ballpark? Just, just very curious. I mean, you told me you switched, you switched building control systems, which I understand.
We didn't switch the heart, we didn't switch the system.
Right. Certainly, we do have Tyler on board.
Yes.
Yes. Tyler, can you talk to that?
So I don't know, uh, how old the current system is. As Jen was just saying, we switched service providers, but we have not upgraded the systems with the switch of service providers. The existing JACES are housing the graphics, which, uh, I don't know your level of expertise, but when the graphics are housed on the Jace versus on a local server or, uh, like, uh, a main controller, it slows everything that down. There's also duplicate virtual points for the middle school. I can't speak to if those points exist from the Berry and High School at this time. But the duplicate virtual points exist for all of the equipment at the middle school is what I'm being told. So sometimes you make a change, and then you reload the the graphic, and the change has reverted back. Sometimes you make a change, and a few hours later, the duplicate point takes over and it reverts the change or changes it to a totally different set point. So the new service provider, E S C, is telling us that that is a byproduct of the graphics living on the existing JACES, which is dragging down the network communications. And it's, it's really giving E S C, uh, the ability to finger point rather than fix. So we know we have a problem at the middle school. We believe that problem exists at the high school and Berry as well, based on what our vendors are telling us. So this is twofold. One, it it will remove the graphics from the JACES, which will make a more stable network and allow us to control the systems more accurately. But it also removes the finger pointing ability that our current service provider has, because right now they're, they're using that a lot. And I am unable to argue the point as heavily as I would like to because there are known issues that led us to to switch service providers. So once we we update the system, which i- in our opinion, needs to happen regardless, it also allows me to hold the the new service provider more accountable to no longer pointing fingers.
I know, I know you weren't here when this was done, but I'm just kind of like, there was no mention of this issue. I mean, it it's not an unknown issue prior to switching systems, you know, providers. And there was no discussion of this when we decided to move over to the new provider, saying, hey, look, there there could be issues with the JACES. You have, as you were saying, old graphics in there competing with our graphics, and it just seems to me like, I mean, the company who installed this should bear some of the responsibility. I mean, this should have been a known issue. This isn't the first system they did, correct?
I I can't speak to any of that history, unfortunately. I I would tend to make the same assumptions you're making, but I I don't have the the history to to support it.
So do we have any idea, ballpark, even how many years this system's been up?
I, I'm just completely guessing. I'm gonna say ten or twenty years.
Yeah, it's been on the capital plan for how long, you know?
Um. This, I, I, last year.
Last year. So anyway, it's on the capital plan for a year. So so basically what we're saying is we need to.
I understand.
Not only, we go back to my question.
No, no, I I understand. What what's confusing me is, is that we switch providers. Provider was responsible to install the new controls.
No, no, that's, that's not.
Well, this is, I understand, not the controls that open the damper. They did, they're doing your software. Whatever company you had, had a program where you can sit at your desk, where some people can do it remotely, where you can look at a section of a building, say, I want to open this damper, I want to close this damper, I want to introduce more air, I don't want as much air. Uh, you got different set points for temperature, all that. You're basically the brain. You hired a company to take over the brain of the system, correct? And Tyler, if I'm incorrect, just speak up. You're not going to hurt my feelings.
Yep, yep. No, so far, you're correct.
Okay, so they install this new system that is.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna chime in right now. There was no install of any new system. The new service provider took over the existing system that we were under contract with the previous service provider for. There was no update during the transition to the new vendor.
Not the kind. Update in software or anything when they took it over?
A- as far as I understand, there was no update of any software. They took over the previous service provider's graphics, controls, programming, all of it.
There has to be a licensing agreement. I mean, if it's a proprietary system.
That is.
Well, that's the stuff where we have the Niagara license.
Yeah, that's the other, uh, item that, uh, First Leckman, uh, Carter was speaking to, being a separate entity that was previously approved. That was the transfer of the Niagara licenses and the service agreements to to continue the the manufacturer updates to the system. But the programming and the graphics and the the code that runs the controls, that was all just taken over as is, is my understanding.
Okay, so excuse my, my ignorance. If I'm understanding this correctly, you had a provider that was managing your system that held a license to use another company's software that runs these systems. And another company came in and said, we're going to take over because you weren't happy with the provider that you were using. So that company had the same license with the third party?
We have no license. So the actual control, the management, Schneider, they have a certain amount of authorized service providers that work on those controls.
Okay, so this is your service provider. The controls all are under the same company. And both companies, kind of like, you know, Cummings and Allison or something, both companies are licensed to work on those.
Correct, correct.
So there really was no update when you switched to this company? You just took over what you already had? They just took over what you already had, or am I wrong, Tyler?
No, you're correct.
Okay, but there was no discussion when they took over that there could be a problem?
I can't speak to that. It it occurred before I started.
They started letting us know that they were finding more and more problems, and so they were giving us proposals uh, for upgrades to the system so to improve the.
And E S C started last year?
Yes.
Right, but Tyler, I know you've been there a short time. Are are the issues that, you know, when you're putting a set point in your system, or you're trying to, you know, change how much air you're bringing in or what you're doing, it's just not responding, and then you have to go in manually? Or what's the problem you're having when you run the controls?
It it is partially what you're saying. It's partially that the program itself doesn't seem to do what I would expect it to do. And and by that, I mean, I send a command to, for instance, the chiller, and the chiller does not acknowledge the command, does not respond to the command. The the building will send this, a similar command to the chiller, saying, I need cooling, and the chiller won't respond to the the set point uh, and the increase in temperature in the building. So it's, it's a lot of bugs of that nature where both the automated programming isn't actually actively controlling the building like it should be. And when I try to make manual adjustments, it's not responding as it should.
And is it, is it isolated to just the chiller, or is it all your units?
Yeah, I can't say definitively that it's all the units, but it does not, it's not isolated just to the chiller. It, so far, my primary focus has been on the cooling side of the system. That's where I've noticed most of the bugs, but we're also not in heating season, so I can't say if we have all of the same bugs with every piece of equipment. But it it it's not just the chiller, and it seems to be widespread, at least at the middle school. Um, and that's been my primary focus these last two weeks, so I haven't dug as deep as I would like to have into the high school or Berry prior to this meeting.
And and in regard to what they're proposing to do with the software, what type of guarantee are they giving you? I mean, it's kind of like a parts replacer, right? Like, uh, could be the alternator. Sorry, it's not the alternator. It's it's this. Are they giving you some level of assurance that by purchasing this new software for, what was it, forty seven thousand?
Forty nine thousand.
Forty nine thousand six hundred, it's going to fix our issues, and they're not going to come back. So that that's, again, I I want to support you guys a hundred percent, but I don't want to just throw money away saying, hey, this should work, and then it's something else. So what type of assurance is the company giving you that this is going to fix the issues we have? Is it in the contract that they proposed?
That they have not, and I do not imagine they would give us a guarantee that this will fix all of our problems, because I honestly don't believe this is all of our problems. But I I I do believe a substantial amount of our problems are stemming from these issues. Uh, but to answer your question, uh, no, they have not given us a guarantee that this will solve all of our problems. They are indicating that this is the majority, uh, this is where a majority of our problems are stemming from. And they're indicating that this should address most of our problems, but that is verbally, not in writing.
Have you guys checked the actual controls themselves? Has anyone come in and inspected the controls and, you know, seeing what's going on there?
I mean, that's what our service provider is supposed to be telling us, and and then that's where they're advising us that this is our issue. I have started to physically check the controls myself at the middle school, but I have not had time to check everything.
And what are you finding with the controls when you check them?
That that the the equipment doesn't seem to be responding to the commands that are being presented, both automatically or manually. Meaning, when I make a physical change in the B M S, telling the equipment to change, that a lot of times it's just not responding.
So the computer set, and it's going to stick to the, 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 the setting that it is, no matter what you do to try and manually change it?
For for some of the equipment, some of it, it will take it temporarily, and then it will revert back on its own after the fact. Um, some immediately after, some at some unknown duration overnight. I've been babysitting this system quite a bit for the middle school. And again, I'm using the chiller as the example. We have two chillers at the middle school. The programming does not allow for the second chiller to stage on when it should. I've been manually forcing it on to try and run the cooling and dry the building out. I've been permanently putting it on, so telling it, don't turn off till I tell you to. And sometimes, when I get up in the morning and check, it has shut off on its own.
Good. The the one chiller shutting off?
Yeah, the secondary chiller that I'm forcing on because it won't stage on on its own. Even though the load in the building is sufficient that it should have turned on and been running, it will not, it apparently will never turn on on its own, as far as I've seen so far.
All right, I mean, I I would like to some more definitive direction. With this, like I said, we're just kind of taking a shot that this is going to be this. We experienced a similar situation where I worked, and it ended up being something inside the chiller itself that we had to replace and kept shutting off over the weekends, no matter what we did. Had to manually start it, but I mean, you're the expert, you're there. I mean, you feel comfortable with this solution?
I mean, again, I I don't feel comfortable telling you that this will one hundred percent definitively solve all of our problems, but I do see this as a major source of issues with the the middle school particularly. Um, and while I cannot guarantee this will solve our problems, I do believe this is a necessary upgrade.
Okay.
Okay. Um. So no further, no further discussion. Are you ready to try minds?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll, I'll start as a board of finance.
Okay.
They have their expert telling us that this is gonna, you know, solve the issue, but my suggestion would be before you go to the board of finance meeting, you kind of work through some of your issues and get some more information from the, uh, the company itself.
Before we take a vote on anything, um, right now, we know this is the biggest deal with the middle school. I mean, shall we assume, though, that the same issue, I know this has been on the capital plan, it needs to be done. How are you su- assuming that the same issues are happening in the other schools that you know of? It's the same collection.
Issues at the other schools, but they're not as pronounced. The middle school is our biggest problem right now. But we do have.
But E S C has, last year when they came on, they recommended you to ball with it.
Yes, yes.
Which is why it's on the capital plan.
Yes.
This is something, it sounds like this would fall under, uh, I mean, air quality and piss and everything with the kids, maybe it's like the kids that are using the ARPA.
Um, I mean, given where we are, we can sort of talk to the board of finance that later. I think right now we need to see our.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah, of course.
When we talked about the four sixty account, we were going to sprinkle a hundred thousand in there to to make up some of their shortcomings. And we had our hand on the the B M S system and said we had to replace that. Okay, so the board of finance, we assumed with the the circle of of Friends Card Bit, that system and a couple of the small things, that those things were purchased. But you're telling me tonight, you paid thirty six thousand of licensing fees. Why wouldn't they pay that out of the regular account? They they have that budget. We were supposed to fix things.
Yeah, if you, if you recall.
Pay for licenses.
If you recall, we took a couple of things that were coming up.
Of maintenance issues.
That were in the four sixty, on both sides of the four sixty. And we did, we made that agreement, said, we're going to take on these couple of things, and these were the couple of things from ARPA that we took on. So so tho- but those were, yes, their licensing fees, but at the time, they were, they were budgeting those out of four sixty, and we were working together to formulate a budget. So that's why this came out of there. Right? For for this, I mean, this is clearly out of the capital plan. It's been on the capital plan for a year. If we want to talk at a later time and whether we want to try and something else with ARPA, we can have that conversation, and you can kick it back to Boris Leckman. Um, but for now, I I I do think we push forward with this, because it does need to be done. It's been on the capital plan for a year.
It's got a lot of things on the capital plan.
Un- understood, understood. And we're trying to be good stewards, but.
Where is the the hundred thousand dollar damage? That's never.
So that's not even on here, because.
It's not going to be in the minutes or anything. It it that's.
Okay, let's, let's talk about the hundred thousand.
Was that caused by this?
But you know what? I don't want to get into a big pissing match over, over what was done, that I'm happy to talk about. What happened was, there's about a hundred thousand dollars worth of damage to that school from mold and milting. And we're mediating that. The school has agreed to take that out of the one percent account to knock it out, get it done before school starts. Last thing we want is anything that would affect our students. As part of that, this part of this needs to be done on the capital plan. And because of what's happened, I think there's a really good reason to move this forward sooner than later, especially for the middle school and what we need to do for those controls. So the hundred thousand dollars per speaking is not part of this meeting. It's not part of our our deliberation, but I'm happy to put that out there that the schools are looking at doing this.
So who's responsible for that damage before it got to that?
But we're not addressing that in this meeting. That's fair enough. So with that, we have a motion on the table. Um, all in favor? Aye, not opposed. Motion carries. Okay. But that will accept the motion to adjourn. Go to the next meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I guess I'll second. On favorites, aye, aye. Okay, we stand adjourned for the Boris Leckman at seven forty nine P M. Um, we will be starting with a joint meeting in momentarily.